I was expecting you to be over here with that. Chris, can I say something?
I'll tell you what, he's still got a question on the floor here.
Okay.
The reclamation.
So, we hold through our mining permit a reclamation bond. That bond is in place to, should the condition that you brought up go belly up or whatever, there's one is there to accomplish reclamation. Obviously, some of these mining permits, the one mining permit that's here is fairly old. The bond would need to be increased. And in our application, prior application, there was a question of how much bond is in place now and with the expansion, what would that grow to or what would it look like? With a permit correction here and bonding the current bonding mix, it'd be about a million and a half dollars to cover the reclamation cost. Now, with this operation, like we talked about earlier, unlike the Yamam operation, the reclamation that can occur or could have occurred up to this point is completed. So, any reclamation that needs to be done moving forward is ahead of us, meaning we don't have any more high walls out at the perimeter yet that we can reclaim. Once we do get high walls to that point and we can start reclaiming them, we do. So, instead of having the reclamation obligation in totality facing us at the end of the operation, it's being done as we go. They call it concurrent reclamation. So, we could go every year and reduce our bond based upon the amount of reclamation incurred. Typically, we don't do that unless there's a large area, just because it's a permit application and it takes time. But with this operation, the reclamation that could have occurred up to this point has occurred, and as we continue to mine and get to our perimeter and there's high walls that can be reclaimed, it gets done concurrent.
My question wasn't about reclamation. My question was taking care of people whose water supply was impacted and will be impacted probably indefinitely, or at least until this water thing, you know, I don't know, you're talking about 16 years. That was my question, was who comes out tests the water? Who puts in systems for them? Who maintains their wells, drills a new well if you guys go belly up?
Actually, the bond, actually, the bond lists all of the statutes to which the funds can be put to. The first one is the Clean Water Act, so that if there is contamination, that money can be used for cleanup. And so, the bond is not just limited to how many shovels full of dirt you have to put in there to fill it up. It actually covers the Clean Air Act, the Clean Water Act, and a number of other acts. So, it does cover the concern that you raise.
Thank you.
So, I brought this up at a previous meeting, that currently the bonding amount is, I think, what, 249,000?
Around that.
And it goes up to like one and a half million if the permit, if the permit goes through. So, kind of marking it to the market, okay? So, that was a concern we brought several times.
So, it's never been adjusted for the last 20 years?
Well, this is my point. It has not been, is that correct?
That's correct, because the, because there's no amendment to the permit.
Right.
It's under the old standards instead of the new standard.
So, if the permit were approved, if the zoning was approved, the bond would be increased to current day levels?
And is there any provision that as this ages, the next 16 years, which is the projection I heard, that, let's say, every five years, there's an increase in that bond?
That's, I'm not sure how that works.
That would go along with, I mean, these homes have appreciated, hopefully.
Steve, is there any, is there any provision for that within?
To my knowledge, there's no set standard for renewal of or reevaluation of bonding. I know he has the right to, to ask for a bond review. Typically, they've only done it when there's been a permit revision, but I know they have the ability to ask at any time that they choose. Historically, they haven't updated. That's why we're at the levels that we are now. They don't seem to have a program that every five years they review again. Whether they do that, I don't know.
Karina?
Karina Rilling, 217,000 acre road. I have a statement from the Conservation Committee that I'd like to read, but I don't know whether the last time will be, because the conversation is...
How long's your statement? Is all of it faded in?
No, no, no. It's, I have a copy for each of you.
Oh, okay. We would appreciate that.
It's a page and a half.
Did you read this at the supervisor's meeting?
Vera Cole read this at the supervisor's meeting.
That's the same?
It's the same statement, but the Planning Commission wasn't there.
We actually were all present.
You were all present?
Yeah, we were.
H and K didn't?
H and K was not. If you'd like them to hear that, then go ahead.
I would like them to hear that. I'm Karina Rilling, member of the West Rock Hill Township Conservation Committee. I'll read a statement on behalf of our committee. Vera Cole already read it at the last meeting, but not everyone has heard this. I'm presenting this comment on behalf of the Conservation Committee, the members of which are David Collinwood, Vera Cole, Michael Schrameyer, Elizabeth Branson, and Karina Rilling. The West Rock Hill Conservation Committee was founded in 1997 to monitor land conservation opportunities and initiate conservation efforts to preserve properties in the township. West Rock Hill Township is currently considering a request to rezone an 11-acre parcel of land from residential conservation to extraction. According to our township's zoning ordinance, the purpose of residential conservation is to promote low-intensity rural development in resource protection areas and to preserve areas of unique natural value and beauty. The purpose of extraction zoning is extractive operations that deplete and consume land areas. As the West Rock Hill Township Conservation Committee, we feel duty-bound to express our unanimous opposition to this zoning change. In doing so, we wish to make the following points. Number one, the residents of West Rock Hill Township have twice voted to approve tax increases for the preservation of open space. For the township to barter away natural resources that are already protected by residential conservation zoning would be a deep betrayal of the residents' expressed priorities and commitment to the preservation of natural resources. Number two, if the township were to approve the zoning change in exchange for concessions, as has been suggested, or in return for favors to the township, this would appear to be in clear violation of the Pennsylvania State Constitution Environmental Amendment. The amendment reads, "The people have a right to clean air, pure water, and preservation of the natural scenic, historic, and aesthetic values of the environment. Pennsylvania's public natural resources are the common property of all the people, including generations yet to come. As trustee of these resources, the Commonwealth should conserve and maintain them for the benefit of all the people. In a 2017 decision, the Pennsylvania Supreme Court states that the Commonwealth may not approach our public natural resources as a proprietor and instead must at all times fulfill its role as a trustee. Under the Pennsylvania State Constitution, the township is obligated to act as a trustee of these resources, not as a proprietor of them. Special treatment or trading natural resource protection for concessions or favors would expose the township to a court challenge and legal costs on many possible fronts." Number three, we draw your attention to several points made by the Bucks County Planning Commission in its review of zoning requests, provided in writing to the township on April 5th of this year. A, the Bucks County Planning Commission finds that this zoning change request is not consistent with a comprehensive plan. This parcel is in a resource protection area. These lands require special protection because they contain critical natural resources. The commission says it should be noted that allowing the proposed expansion would place quarry operations closer to a tributary into Ridge Valley Creek designated as high-quality waters by the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection. B, the Bucks County Planning Commission warns that if approved, quarry operations would expand in the very areas where underground water supplies are most limited in the township, describing water in these geological formations as limited and very limited. The commission notes that private unlocked wells serve as a primary source of drinking water for almost 80% of our township's population. The Bucks County Planning Commission writes finally, that the applicant appears to have addressed these groundwater concerns to some extent by adjusting well protection areas required as part of the 1992 agreement, and then notes that West Rock Hill Township itself provides an additional 500 feet of well protection around the site. In other words, this agreement holds the township and its taxpayers responsible for well damage caused by quarry operations. Furthermore, the Bucks County Planning Commission questions the agreement's well protection coverage for expanded quarry operations and recommends consideration of a new agreement specific to this parcel. All in all, the proposed zoning change raises serious uncertainty about responsibility for well protection and increases the township's exposure to responsibilities and costs for damages, including risks to public health, which the township did not cause. Land areas that are depleted and consumed are lost for generations. The damage to natural resources and the risk to public health are not readily reversible or corrected, no matter what agreements or written obligations may be in place. The location of the quarry expansion is perilously close to precious wetlands and Ridge Valley Creek tributaries. Currently in remarkably good condition, putting these critical natural resources in one's way would be an unacceptable and unnecessary risk to community health and well-being. We thank you for your consideration of these factors and urge you to act in the best interest of the township's residents, taxpayers, and future generations, and say no to the Naesville Materials' application for zoning change. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Michelle?
Michelle Shutter, 260,000 acre road. I have some information I wanted to share. It is widely thought that naturally occurring arsenic dissolves out of certain rock formations when groundwater levels drop significantly. The F. Barton Group recently prepared a brief evaluation regarding arsenic concentrations in Naesville Materials Quarry. In conclusion, it was the author's opinion that arsenic concentrations identified in residential wells proximate to the Naesville Quarry are a result of background concentrations and not associated with quarry operations. This was based on looking at the results of 15 wells surrounding Naesville Quarry in 2008, 2016, and 2017, which suggested arsenic exceedances were very site-specific and random, and that geologic studies suggest that mineral deposits associated with or near diabase intrusions within the Newark Basin may have elevated concentration of arsenic. An applied geochemistry study entitled "Effects of Human-Induced Alteration of Groundwater Flow on Concentrations of Naturally Occurring Trace Elements at Water Supply Wells" warrants attention. The study was conducted by four U.S. geological survey scientists, and it is recently dated, 2011. The study examined different aquifer systems in the United States, although naturally occurring trace elements such as uranium, arsenic, and radon can exceed concentrations that are considered harmful to human health. The results show that pumping-induced hydraulic gradient changes can mix chemically distinct groundwater. Chemical reactions between these mixed groundwaters can result in the mobilization of trace elements such as uranium, arsenic, and radon with subsequent transport to water supply wells. The results show that human activities, including various land uses, well drilling, and pumping rates and volumes, can adversely impact the quality of water in supply wells when associated with naturally occurring trace elements in aquifer materials. This occurs by causing subtle but significant changes in geochemistry and associated trace element mobilization, as well as enhancing advective transport processes. 2016 Naesville material documents reference that the quarry was actively pumping water from the quarry pit at approximately 350,000 gallons per day, two or quarter million gallons per day. There are situations where mobilization of arsenic or other trace elements is difficult to anticipate because of the complexity of groundwater flow systems and the associated effects of water use are not well understood. The behavior of trace elements may be difficult to predict, especially when the naturally occurring system is altered. Naturally occurring trace elements can remain sequestered by geochemical conditions that minimize their solubility. If the geochemical balance of the natural system is altered by activities such as groundwater withdrawal, these trace elements may be mobilized and the quality of the water supply compromised. Large volume pumping can create unnatural groundwater gradients. These factors can act to introduce trace elements directly through movement and mixing of water, or indirectly by changing the geochemistry in the aquifer or well bore. Primary geochemical factors that affect naturally occurring trace elements' mobility in groundwater include pH, oxidation reduction, redox conditions, the presence of ions that form soluble complexes with metals, absorption processes, and the effects of ion competition for absorption sites, evaporative concentration, and mixing and dilution. It is important to note, the residential wells in the vicinity of the quarry were drilled to different depths and at different times. Pumping rates are also different. Tests performed from the same well can produce different results, as evidenced by test results. We may be near a diabase intrusion, but just looking at arsenic concentration results in well water samples from sampling events conducted in 2008, 2016, and 2017 without conducting geochemical studies is not sufficient to demonstrate that arsenic levels are naturally occurring and not elevated from quarry dewatering activities. There are no geochemical studies that show the arsenic levels in the groundwater sampled is not from the quarry activity. In addition, the absence of an arsenic exceedance based on prior sampling does not mean it will not possibly be detected in exceedance in the future, as the dewatering activity at the quarry is ongoing. Regardless of groundwater quality impacts and studies, the Naesville operations have resulted in adverse impacts to our well water supply and quantity, and they will continue to negatively impact our potable water supply, and an expansion of the quarry closer to residential homes will result in even greater groundwater impacts. Naesville bought the property subject to this application even though they knew it was owned RC. Now, they want to rezone the lot to extraction so they can expand the quarry into a residential area where families live, when people need a potable water source to survive. I also would like to mention that there are two types of arsenic that may be present in the groundwater, arsenate III and arsenate V. Removal efficiencies for arsenate III are less than those of arsenate V, and treatment systems for arsenate III are more complex and costly than that for arsenate V. Arsenate III may be found deeper in bedrock. Due to the negative drawdown impacts as a result of the quarry operations, local residents have had to drill their wells deeper so they can access sufficient groundwater volume, thus potentially exposing their water supply to this more dangerous form of arsenate III. This is just another example of negative impacts imposed by the quarry. Naesville has offered as a condition III in their October 20, 2017 letter to the West Rock Hill Township Planning Commission the following. Naesville will provide at its sole cost labor and materials to install treatment systems for all West Rock Hill Township residents within the 1,500-feet well-protection zone, which have detections of arsenic exceeding the statewide health standard of .010 mg per liter. What type of system? Will it remove arsenate III, if that is the type of arsenic in the water? The residents subsequently is to assume responsibility for maintenance operation of the treatment system following completion of the installation. Considering all of the negative impacts that have already been imposed on the residents within the well-protection zone, especially groundwater supply impacts, it is not inappropriate to request that Naesville Materials install arsenic removal systems not as a condition, but as required mitigation. In the 1992 agreement, it is stated, "All the wells within the protection area shall benefit from the performance of that agreement and shall be considered third-party beneficiaries of the agreement. The township, as well as any property owner who would benefit from the performance of the undertakings of the agreement, have the right to enforce this agreement, provided the well is within the well-protection area. Since many of us in the well-protection zone are presently unable to drink our water, we hereby would like to enforce our right to a potable water supply, as delineated in the agreement, may supposedly on our behalf between the township and Naesville Materials, while still opposing the rezone and expansion request."
All right. I think we've heard quite a bit tonight. No one's opposed. We're going to shut things down. I want to talk with the committee here. How do you guys feel on a decision soon?
Let me ask a question.
Yeah, absolutely.
At the supervisor's meeting last month, they agreed to have an independent hydrogeologist study.
I don't know that they agreed to it yet. They talked about it. I think they're going to talk about it tomorrow night. But yes.
I just wonder if that has been done?
It has not.
Probably in several months. Someone's going to be fresh and start from scratch before that is completed, even if it is authorized.
Yeah, for anyone that doesn't know what Ben was asking, at the last supervisor's meeting, it was brought up that they were considering hiring an outside independent hydrogeologist. Not that we don't trust Val and H and K, but we think it's more appropriate to have an independent. So, that is what Ben is referencing. I don't think any decisions have been made, done, nothing to make yet.
Morning.
Tomorrow night, that's what I assume.
Can't guarantee it.
Pardon me?
Can't guarantee it.
Right. Understood.
Okay.
Anything?
Do we want to wait for that? Do we want to wait for a recent submission of the pending application? Is that, from what I've heard, the main to what we're talking about now, I don't know if that's going to be our decision either.
Well, I mean, it sounds like the pending is not going to be overly influential at this point.
I don't anticipate it to change much. It takes five minutes to run. It's not, it's not a difficult thing to get an answer back very quickly on that.
Yeah, I mean, the hydrogeologists, we, at this point, don't know if or when that would take place, and we're going to prolong this process.
So, you're asking for a motion?
We're either, I think, we can ask for a motion, or we can, we can table it.
Question?
Yes, Karina.
I thought that there was new information presented that you would have to go and think about and discuss it as well, so quarry had questions posed to them that they have to bring back to us.
That's what this packet was, which we've had since the end of October.
Since the end of October, you mean, October 20?
We received this packet with the answers that were presented, so we've, we've had the ability to prove all this.
Right. But I mean, I thought the residents had a lot more questions also, that were intelligent questions that should be addressed, including the report by the, by the statement by the Conservation Committee that had not been discussed before.
The questions that were, that we were waiting to hear back from were questions from the Planning Commission and the township manager and supervisors. We didn't really expect answers to all of the questions from the, from the residents that we've been hearing.
So, do you want to digest through information? And wait to see if they, what the supervisors decide if they're able to have a study?
We can do that.
I think that's what it boils down to, is we table it for another month to see what the supervisors do with regard to an independent hydrogeologic study and come to some conclusions to when we should expect results of that, and that's when the next time we potentially be looking at a vote on something, or we move ahead and make a motion tonight. I basically have two choices.
Yeah, I agree. Now, if we, I mean, if they come back and say that they're not hiring the hydrogeologist, then, you know, we can act next month. If we want to wait for the results, if they do hire, it's going to be a couple of months probably.
Steve, how long do you think if that, if that process were to go through, how long do you think that would take?
You said a few months, you know, with weather, you know, that could impact it more. And I don't know what scope that the board is interested in.
It could be as limited as doing some additional testing, or as extensive as reproducing the hydro studies that the quarry presented. So, I'm not sure where the board, you know, would come in on that issue.
Patty, get her here.
Tree Swartik, 705, 201 road. If you decide not to make the decision, if the township supervisors have more information brought forward, and you make a decision, and you're making a decision with incomplete information, I mean, that doesn't make sense to me. Do you see my point?
Point eight, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes?
Henry Sutko, 115,000 acre road. Question I got, isn't that circular? That shape there, is that the rock formation, is that what will be adversely affected, more so from the water and all? Because you got a 1,500, I'm assuming that's circular that is taken care of. How does that, if you overlaid that on there, how would that look? You understand what I'm saying, Scott?
Yeah, I understand what you're saying.
Is there any way you could do that, or at least show it roughly right now? You understand what I'm saying? Because if it was circular, then it makes sense, because on the upper and lower side there, it's going to be less adversely affected outside. Am I correct or no?
Yeah, you're, you're saying, you know, 5,000-foot radius around a property is going to be more circular, and what you're seeing here is more of an elongated.
Yeah, so the guys on the extreme end there, they might not be, how long the distance, I guess the next question would be, what is the length of the distance, the longest point across, how many feet? Because you got the 1,500 feet, is that over 3,000 feet, or if it, it is over 3,000?
From here to here?
Yeah.
Yeah, so let me, let me back up to give you a point of reference.
Okay, I just want to get this back down so everybody understands what I'm saying.
It'll help the conversation. So, this dash line right here, that I'm trying to trace over, that's 1,000 foot from the proposed, the existing perimeter and the proposed limit of mining, just to give you a visual reference. So, that's 1,000 foot. So, you could offset that additional 500 foot, and that would represent 1,500 foot or 1,000 foot from the proposed expansion. Now, obviously, if you continued out around the existing perimeter, it's going to be out here.
So, that goes from center of the quarry, original extraction?
Right, right.
Or whatever the right terminology is?
So, that 1,000 foot, let's call it 1,500, because the way it's stated in the agreement, it's 1,000 foot, and then West Rock Hill added an additional 500 foot. So, essentially, the well-protection zone is 1,500 foot.
The 1,000 is the same as the extra 500, there's no...
Yeah.
There's no odd wording or changes in that.
Right, so it's 1,500 foot. And you're right, the 1,500 foot around the quarry, whether it be the existing quarry or the existing quarry plus the expansion, is more of a circular shape. And in comparison to the zone of influence, which is more of an ellipse, they're a little, a little different. So, I think what your question is, you know, how does the 1,500-foot well-protection zone standards apply to the zone, the balance of the zone of influence?
Correct.
Is that where I'm...
Exactly. So, the outer points of the longer distance could be adversely affected well-wise, water-wise, whatever.
Right.
But that is, anyway, how wasn't that taken into consideration originally? Or how did yous?
Right, so...
Who made that choice?
Yeah, so...
Let's put it that way.
And Steve, correct me if I, if I missed state, the 1992 agreement was negotiated before a groundwater model was ever even prepared. And the groundwater model is what, is what created that elliptical shape, okay? So, in 1992, when that agreement was negotiated, there wasn't a groundwater model performed, so that shape didn't exist. So, they used the 1,500 foot.
So, the Planning Commission at that time didn't have that knowledge?
Or the zoning...
Well, it was negotiated with the Board of Supervisors, and at the time, it was felt that that was a reasonable distance where there might be effects. I mean, one of the things you've got to understand is that that is a funnel. So, the fact that that zone of influence extends out as far as it does, doesn't mean that there is a significant... or any of that sort of thing. And, you know, we went back and forth between the township and its engineer. Steve was still in high school then, and, you know, we came up with a number that seemed to work for everybody.
So let me explain to you, that ellipse, the zone of influence that's presented there, that groundwater model that created that is part of our mine permit application, okay? So, and when we, through the state of Pennsylvania, if there's an impact within that, because that's the identified impact area, through the state, they're going to look at all the properties within that. So you have this 1,500-foot well-protection zone in the agreement, but to be quite honest, when we address complaints that come in or well impacts and assess them, we're not really considering the 1,500 foot. We're looking at that zone of influence, because that's what we're regulated to through the state of Pennsylvania. You know, we're looking at the larger area.
Well, see, that's why, that's why I brought up this question, because I figured you'd say that, so that's why I'm letting you walk down that road. Because our well, original property, it was only 36 feet deep original. My grandparents got it dug. I don't know the years, but whatever. We got it dug to, it went dry, and we went 260-some-odd feet. Within two years, we had to go another 100 feet. The problem is, I contacted whoever at the quarry at the time, and they said, "You're past 1,500 feet." But we are maybe the double distance of you and me past 1,500 feet. So...
When was that?
So in other words, we're probably about, like, 1,550 feet out. So my question to you, do you mind coming and checking our well?
Absolutely.
Because the similar problems that the Gervarts had, it's exactly, I was actually considering taking the filter out tonight and bringing it in, but it's so, I think I still might do it. If you would look at those filters and see what the quality of the water that your water, I mean, it actually stops, you don't get water. I mean, it clogs that much with mud. I mean, it is actual mud.
In one month.
Oh, yeah, I have to do it less than every two weeks. In other words, the shower water don't stop, I mean, it comes out, but it's so poor. So would you be okay? Give me a card and we'll look at it. That's why I'm concerned about everybody else. If you do this expansion, the probability is more, as we face this, that it will adversely affect somebody a little bit outside of that 1,500 feet.
That's what the zone of influence is predicting.
Okay.
When was that, that you contacted, probably?
About when we had ours done, 2005. It's about the same time we had them.
It was about 2005. Were you there, Scott?
I was around, but I wasn't dealing with this site. Unfortunately, I can't speak to those specific instances at that time.
If you're all right, would just give me a card, we'll get down.
Yeah, I will get that to you.
And if, you know what I mean?
What's your last name, Henry?
Sidco.
Got it.
115,000 acre road.
Thank you. In other words, our corner of our property.
I know where you're at now. I know where you're at, yeah. You know, again, I can't speak to...
Well, you see, that's what my, and to yous, guys, you know, let's not make that same mistake again possibly, because whatever that is, in other words, that parameter, and giving people a little bit of a break there, because, I mean, we've been dealing with this for all the time.
Understand, yeah, understand. And again, I can't speak to 2004, 2005, because I wasn't involved. But I can speak to, you know, the last 10 years or especially the last two, three years, and how we respond, and what I said earlier. We don't look at the 1,500 foot. We're looking at the zone of influence that's in that groundwater model, because that's what we're dictated to at the state.
Whoever previous to you did not do that. Do you see my point?
What, I'm sorry?
Whoever was previous to you did not do that.
But we are doing it now. And you can see by these locations here, we've addressed and looked at properties all the way out there. So we're not saying, well, to those properties, you're well outside the 1,500 foot, we're not looking at you. We are, you know? We are looking at all the properties within the zone of influence. We hear what you're saying. We've looked at the quality concerns of arsenic and iron bacteria, and, you know, we do believe that they are naturally occurring, and the quarry, there's no correlation between quarry activities. That being said, we've proposed things that we believe are above and beyond what most operators would do, and are offering conditions and concessions to help out the residents surrounding the quarry with regard to these issues. Our track record with well complaints, especially in the last two years, five years, that I've been involved, the 10 years, we're attentive to it. When we get a complaint, we get out there as soon as we can, within 24 hours, within that same day, and we start looking at it. We consult with the state, and we share our data. We take it seriously. You know, we...
That's been our approach all the way through this process, is to be open-minded and make sure that we were listening to everyone as much as we were talking about our plans and the proposals we had. There's many times where we've gone back to the drawing board and looked at where we were, included the comments that were made here, and changed the plan along the way. So this whole process, from the very beginning, from when we had that open discussion gathering at Tyler Sport until now, is evolving, and is evolving yet tonight. As we listen to complaints, as we hear situations, we're dealing with them. We're proactive, and that's our history. That's our culture. It is. We're...
I guess what I'm saying, too, sorry to interrupt.
That's all right.
Even with, even if those go through, what your plans don't go through, at least I feel it should be at least handled from what we got now with the information that we got. There's always new technology, and you're learning as you go.
Of course.
So if we could just put that so that everybody is taken care of if they do have an issue. And I think you are upfront about taking care of it, but that experience didn't happen with us. It just didn't happen.
Right.
I mean, I called them both times. Every time that I said, they said no. Even about getting temporary water, it was no.
I think that's another thing.
They said you had approved, they said I had approved that it was the quarry's fault for them, for us to get taken care of, even just for temporary water. So what do you do?
And that's not our approach now.
So it cost us each time we had it, well, it cost $3,000 each time. So I'm just saying, from what I'm seeing, I mean, maybe you're above board now and doing what you need to do, but prior to dealing with you, it hasn't happened. That's why I'm asking you. So I'm putting the burden on you.
We will be in contact, for sure.
Okay. You got a card or something that...
I will get you.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Teresa Sidco, 115,000 acre road. Everyone has addressed water, and water is very crucial to our life. Henry and I have an organic farm, animals out back. People don't see it because our farm is off the road. Watering those animals is very critical. Organic is very critical. Hershbergers on the Ridge Road, very critical, organic water. But the point I want to make is our air. The tree line that blocks the quarry from the prevailing westerlies will be gone. The berm will be gone. Little tiny berm doesn't count for all that dust. We have enough dust already. Prevailing westerlies are extremely strong. I just wanted to address the air where water is very critical, because we see it every day, but we need to breathe clean air also.
So to yous, if I know, if it wasn't...
We know what...
If I get a letter, I'm going to say. But at least you could look into that, what I was kind of addressing with that area there. If you would kindly at least look into it and see if there's any way, I don't know, I don't know the exact of what to do or what to say, you guys would know, but just so at least it was addressed and considered.
We actually had a question. Yes?
Denise Rogers, Lower Rocky Dillwood. We've been talking a lot about water tonight, severe quality issues. The one thing we really haven't talked about really is that we have zoning ordinance.
That's right.
There's a purpose that this township created that zoning ordinance. We didn't create it to say, "Well, okay, maybe in this case, that's good to have. Maybe in this case, oh, maybe not." We created it because that zoning ordinance is consistent, makes a consistency for land use in our township that we have as residents moved here for, lived here a long time for, want to preserve it. We have a township that has a conservation committee. I don't know how many other townships take the time to have people really research and see what's good for us. We've invested a lot of money in open space. This use is in place now. Somebody mentioned a stake before. That stake's 25-some-years-old, 25-years-old. Let's not make another mistake and let it progress without really looking at that whole big picture of what's consistent with our township. What consistency are we going to keep? Everybody talks about Bucks County and how nice it is. Well, Bucks County has some big blights, and they're unfortunately the responsibility of Painted Kittle House. We have it here, it's a blight. That hole will be a blight. It's not going to be a nice pond.